These nine oh four, I'd like to call the Adams County Supervisor of the Board. God with the prayer. Father in the name of Jesus, we thank you for another opportunity to meet Lord God. We thank you for grace that bring us over the weekend and give us traveling grace to bring us here. Lord God, we ask that you be in the midst of our business today, Lord God. We ask that you bless everybody who is represented here today. Lord God, we ask that you bless the county collectively and then dear Lord, we ask that you turn around and bless us individually. And when it's all over, Lord, we ask you to bless us in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Do the prayers of the living, our prayers of the living to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I need a motion for the approval of the docket. Been promptly moved by Supervisor Hutchinson and promptly settled by Supervisor Wilson. Would there be any discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. Claim number forty-one seventy-nine, Davis, name on eight day. I was hoping yes.
All right, would there be any more discussion? If there'll be no more discussion, all in favor, vote by using sign of a "I". Any opposed, naysay, or sign right, motion carried, unanimous. Our county business, letters of support, Mr. Gray, Wes, I see you sitting here.
Good morning, President Davis and members of the board. In two thousand thirteen, one of the most gifted high school coaches in Natchez Adams County in the state of Mississippi passed away. You have a copy that I will be wanting to... Henry Doc Woods, what's his name? In two thousand two, you have a copy of the Senators Bob Dearing and Robert Johnson's commending of Coach Woods in Resolution five forty for his forty years of service to our youth. In that same resolution, the mayor and board of parliament acknowledged Coach Woods, the honoring of Coach Woods by the city, I mean, for his work also. And also, they recommended that the high school track field be named in Coach Woods' honor. And this was the same year that Coach Woods had retired, in two thousand one, at that time he was living. In two thousand three, two years after retirement, Coach Woods was inducted into the Mississippi Association of Coaches Hall of Fame. Several former high school coaches have been honored with the facility in their name. Coach Woods was not, you have a list of those. No coach that I know of in Natchez Adams County has been honored with their name on a track field. However, a public school high school track coach from Gulfport was honored just last year, in two thousand two, two thousand twenty-two, by naming their complex after him. I'm here today, I know it is not your authority to make that decision, but I'm here today to ask your support if you believe in the information that you are given and that you support that idea to name Coach Woods, to name high school track field in his honor. I'm scheduled, I've been given permission by the superintendent to come in October to make a request, make this request. I've been given permission from the mayor to come to their meeting in this month to make the same request for their support. Though I, again, I understand y'all don't have that authority as supervisor or the mayor and board of all. However, because you represent the public and you have a, I'll say, a good way, but not a good way, what I'm trying to say. If you support the idea, then it may be very influential in helping the school board to make their decision. So, again, that's why I'm here, to make that request. Again, if you can't do anything, I understand, but if you can, as representatives of all the districts in the county, I would hope that you can at least give me a letter of recommendation or come in person as I make the requests. Any question?
Any question? Any question? So you heard that, the request of just a letter of support for naming the track field under Doc Woods. What's the prayer of the board?
Some.
Been promptly moved by Supervisor Hutchins and promptly settled by Supervisor Gray. Would there be any discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. I one hundred percent agree with what Mr. West is saying. Doc Woods started track at St. B. Thompson School when they didn't even have a track field over there. He got with the fire department and used their fire hoses to create lanes over there at St. B. Thompson to help track me. So Doc has track in his community. You're talking about St. B. Thompson, you're talking about North Natchez, and you're talking about Natchez High School. And Doc was one of the most respected track coaches in the state of Mississippi. That's why his record speaks for itself with the championship he had. And I don't know, but two or three other coaches in the state of Mississippi that have the resume that Henry Doc Woods have, so that's all I gotta say. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, if there'll be no more discussion, all in favor, vote by using sign of a "I". "I"? Any opposed, naysay, or sign right, motion carried, unanimous. All right, thank you, Mr. West. Next on agenda is Mr. Joseph Fur. Updates on Chester Wills Field.
Good morning. Joseph Fur, I'm the landscape architect doing the work at Chester Wills Field. I have an update and a couple of paper housekeeping items I'd like to put before the board today. Should be getting a, everyone should be getting a copy of our, just got some photo, photos of the status of the project. Contractor, which is Nathan Stubbs, is actually here this morning. They're doing a very good job. Actually, they're at or maybe a little have schedule at this point. You can see from the pictures, they've got all demolition done, they've got the field graded, they've got the irrigation in, you know, roughed in for the outfield, they've got the sand cap material put in the outfield, and they got a good portion of the chain link fencing that needs to be put in. They've got the dugouts in good shape, top roofs on the dugouts, they've got some walls and so forth to build and some footings. They're waiting on one fabrication of some steel for the backstop netting post. But all in all, the project is going, going very well. And I believe it's gonna be a very successful, beautiful ballpark when we finish it. If you look at the second item that you have, it's a request for change order number two. If you remember, the bids originally came in higher than we needed and did a lot of hard work with the contractor and our firm and the people involved here in Natchez. We were able to do change order number one, which was a value engineering change order that decreased the price. I don't remember the exact amount, but decreased to about four hundred and ninety thousand dollars, I believe. So we had a, we had a deductive change order. During the construction, we ran into three items that were unforeseen conditions that are requiring some remedial work in order to, you know, complete the project properly. Item number one is, we were removing some of the walls out there that used to form the back and some box seating to reconfigure the field that we needed to, to get the space. Unbeknownst to us, when we, when we cut that wall away, you could see on that first page, the main walkway that goes across the wooden bleachers is supported by, I'm not sure what, gravity hooks or something, air hooks that they're holding it up. But it's a very strange way to construct something like this, but there was nothing to support that wall once we removed the, once we removed the wall to the outside. So need to come in and put in a footing and a structural wall that'll hold that up so that it won't fall down over time. It's very well built, but it is kind of strange construction. We had no way of knowing that when we did the plans because it was all behind, behind the walls and underground and it's not what we expected. So that's the first item. The second item, there were some, there were some utility lines that were slightly outside of the area that was surveyed. There's a fiber optic line and a gas line. This is in the right field corner. Our original grading plan was to grade through the area where these locate because that corner is, kind of cuts into a hill. And once we found that these utilities were there, grading it in that direction was no longer possible because we just, we can't, can't grade through the power line. So what that required was for us to add a little bit more, a little bit of subsurface drainage to be able to drain that right field corner. Had we known that those power lines were there in the first place, this is how we would have designed it. It's really the only way to get the water out. We thought we had a cheaper solution to do it, but since those, since those lines are there, we need to put in this additional drainage and do some, a little bit of additional grading. And so that's included in item number two, as well as, as well as our drawing to give the contractor a direction of the direction that he needed to go. Actually, I just described item number three on the plans, if you're looking, on the photographs, if you look at that, sorry about that. And then item number two is in the outfield. Again, we had a survey that showed marginal fall outside of the exit pipe of the drain to the road that is there, and there's a culvert. We always knew it was a tight kind of slope, but we were, again, we were trying to save a little bit of money and not put as much pipe in. As we got out there and we looked at it, the grades and the survey, you know, grades were correct, but what happens is the ditch kind of goes up and down a little bit and it's pretty flat. So we feel like if we, if we just rely on the ditch, it's gonna be a perpetual maintenance problem because those ditches can fall in, fill in, you know, silt in pretty easily when you don't have water flowing. So we're recommending that we add a hundred and twenty feet of pipe there to get it all the way to the culvert and get the water out. Otherwise, we're gonna always be backing water up onto the field, which is gonna affect playability, affect the agronomics of the work. So all total, these three items require a change of, an additive change of thirty, my total, thirty-five thousand six hundred and four dollars. And contractors requested an extra fourteen days to provide these items. I believe all these items are priced properly and in accordance with Mississippi State, you know, procurement laws. I don't think there's any circumvention of those laws. So I'd recommend that these change orders be approved and ask that you do so publicly.
Well, you heard the question, Mr. Fur. What's the prayer of the board? It's been promptly moved by Supervisor Lewis, promptly settled by Supervisor Wilson. Would that be in discussion?
Yes, sir.
Please.
I just wanted to know, we still have the funding in the recreational. Okay.
I was gonna ask the same question.
All right, so if there'll be no more discussion, all in favor, vote by using sign of a "I". Any opposed, naysay, or sign right, motion carried, unanimous. Thank you.
Great, one more item. On Friday, we, we had a request for proposal. We received our proposals. This is for the Musco sports lighting. It's an energy efficient system, therefore, we're able to do a request for proposals in accordance with Mississippi State bid law. We received three bids. This is to put in the lighting, as well as, we have to build a new service feed from the pole that will feed the lighting. And this, if you recall, the sports lighting package is proposed to be a lease purchase. The way that this process works is that we get bids, once we get a bidder online, then we will negotiate with a lending, with a lender to do the lease portion of the project. We got three bids. The estimated, our estimate for this work was seven hundred sixty-five thousand dollars. We got three bids ranging from five hundred thousand five hundred to six hundred thousand five hundred, I'm sorry, six hundred thousand five, six hundred fifty-three thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars. All of the, we do have a, we do have a time sensitive project because we want this to be done before we start the renovations to the stadium. And of course, we want it ready to go before spring baseball season. The, what we found from all three bidders was that there was one element in the, in the plans that had a long lead delivery time. So all of the contractors can start the work and finish the work within the prescribed time if the, if the equipment is delivered. This is not the Musco equipment. The Musco equipment that they're providing will be there on time for them to add, but it's some of the hookups, some of the panels and the switches. We are looking at options to speed that up. This is still resistant from the supply chain problem. This particular panel, it was spec, is a twenty-two week delivery. So working with my electrical engineer, we've come up with a potential way to change it to get the, to get the lights done and instead of waiting twenty-two weeks, wait maybe like three weeks for delivery. I've discussed this with my electrical engineer. He's okay with the change and is recommending it. I've discussed it with the low bidder. He said that he did not think it would change his price unless we decided there is an option to get the original equipment specified, but we would have to do a quick ship option, so there may be a small upcharge for that that he would be due if we decide to go in that direction. All three of these bids are good. It's a nice grouping of amounts. These were all contractors that the lighting manufacturer has had good experience with, so I think they're all good bidders. They were invited. My recommendation would be to approve the low bidder, which was Austin Electric at five hundred thousand five hundred dollars, and allow us to determine the best path forward in terms of reducing that timeframe and getting a project that we can get built in time. And the, so we would, we would approve the project, and if there is any additional cost to do it, it would be, it would be minimal, maybe one percent as much that we could do as part of a change order. But my goal is to not have any change to their bid other than something which is a specific decision that we make for timing.
Okay, you say of this low bidder, I'm looking at the price and I'm looking at completion date. And you say if it doesn't make it by then or whatever, it's a chance that we have a one percent increase?
Roughly, we don't know that, we don't know the exact price, and we have, we have two different options. And the contractors, you know, this all, we found out about this Friday, so afternoon, so we haven't had a chance to fully work everything out, but that's a general idea. The end any increase in cost would be minimal, but in order to get it done, you know, within the, within the prescribed time, it would be something I recommend. Also, I don't think any increased cost would change the order of bidder, bidders in terms of the amounts as they all qualify their bids. No one said that they could, they could do it at this price without qualifying that they would have to, you know, wait on the equipment or make a change to the plan.
All right, any more discussion? All right, if there'll be no more discussion, what's the prayer of the board?
Make the motion, move forward with the architect's recommendation.
The promptly move, the promptly settle. Would there be any more discussion? The bid.
Funding, is the funding part of it, is it in place?
I think this is not really in.
Yeah, this is different.
This is a lighting, isn't it?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, this would be a lease purchase, funding thing, so now it doesn't fall under your bond. Probably the lighting is not really done within the next few weeks, so fall into the fiscal year ending in twenty-five year. That's sort of stuff, so. It's a new, it's a new cost. It's not a cost, it's out of the bond, unless I'm mistaken.
No, it's not in the bond, but this was, this was discussed prior to this rating. It was all board approval before this rating.
I'm just asking where the funding gonna come from. I understand it's a lease purchase, but do we have an idea what we gonna be paying back and how much?
What your debts are, this is the lowest qualified proposal, I think it's the language of it is. And this were not a binding movement yet because they have to get the paperwork, which actually has a date of when you start and all that. That will tell you your debt service and so forth at that point. But you still gotta accept them to move to the next step, the most qualified proposal. And at that point, it'll go, you'll program it in on the fiscal year ending in twenty-five.
All right.
So it won't affect your budget coming out. Coming into the budget next day.
So, Mr. President, what you're saying is this won't affect the budget we adopt, but it'll affect the next budget that we...
Would there be any more discussion? If there's no more discussion, all in favor, vote by using sign of a "I". Any opposed, naysay, or sign right, motion carried, unanimous.
The final item is that as we go forward, now that we've moved forward with the lighting, the next step is to secure some bids on the renovation of the grandstands and the rest, addition of the restrooms and some work that is, that is adjacent to that, that project, adjacent to the field. We are going to probably take some of that work and look at doing it as part of the current project as a, as an appropriate change order, just to protect the investment of what we've got, you know, near the field. And it makes sense at this time to look at that. We're, we're still working on some numbers with that and trying to finalize our budgets for the, for the remaining dollars, you know, that you guys have in your bond to, to complete the project. So we'll probably be back in two weeks to talk about that in a little bit more detail. Just wanted to put that out there.
Mr. President.
Excuse me, when you say, how much do we have remaining that we have to work with?
It's roughly half a million dollars in the bond, I believe. I'm sorry?
No, 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 this left on the project.
This left.
That will be a part of the cost.
The, the, the original budget that we were working on was, was roughly, was, without the lighting, was roughly two million dollars. And so this current project is at one point five, so that's the, kind of the remaining dollars that you've approved.
So my question is, are we gonna have to find additional funding to be able to do what you're saying?
Well...
No.
Oh, let my answer the question.
The, the, the budget that we have does not include additional funding. So we're, we're, that's what we're working on now, is to get everything in that budget.
Thank you, sir.
All right. City government bidding. Any city government? No city government bidding. The only city government bidding I have, because we have been in work, I know we had thirty days left, Scott. Are we moving forward? In progress with Morgantown Road.
As far as I...
You gonna, can you hear your report? No, you can do it now, city government.
And why I got meeting with Bill in the afternoon? Got the timeframe that we take the back door when we get on the avenue.
Yeah, we've been coordinating with the utility companies. You know, we found out that the utilities have not been coordinated, so we've been coordinating with the utility company. And all they ask us to do is to mark our right of way. So our survey is currently doing that, as we speak, letting them know where they have to relocate their utilities to before we can start construction.
Okay. All right.
So, Mr. President, I just asked a question. How long we been working on Morgantown Road?
Before you, an hour eighteen years.
So, so you mean to tell me, we, we been lobbying for money for Morgantown Road and we didn't realize we had to move the utilities? They probably got a bid. To me, that's part of moving utilities. And I don't understand, man. It just seemed like to me, I hate to say this, but it seemed like to me that from the start, this part, this project has been sabotaged and you got a lot of stuff that coming up at the end of the project should have been at the beginning of the project. I've been part of the fire ninety-two with the city or whatever the case may be. And all these things we talking about now come up at the beginning and not the end, and it's amazing. We got environmental issues that haven't been addressed. We got utilities that need to be moved that haven't been addressed. I guess I'm the only one thinking like this, but in a major project like that, all this stuff should have came up at the beginning. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right. Like I said, well, we can continue to work it forward, Mr. King, I mean, y'all just, everybody know that this been a big project and we got kind of on the end of it. I know I'm four years in on twenty-year project, so just continue working so we can try to iron these things out and try, so we can try to hopefully, we get some relief for these folks on Morgantown Road because, you know, it is a school out there, it's, we just repopulated the school, probably put double the size of students, and we got a big neighborhood, so it's really important. So I would, I appreciate if y'all continue to work forward and we work through these things to get this road done. Thank you. Departmental reports.
Good morning.
Good morning.
And it fails with you now, one more. I have a question while I just started. Do we have a plate on the building on Stafford Street?
Yeah.
We do not, because we're waiting on information about that before we ask about. We need to know what that might mean. We can send it over to the city because we don't, we can't send a report we don't understand.
Okay, we're trying to get that from the village this time. Okay, moving forward, for September the first through September the eighteenth, Natchez Fire Department had fourteen calls and ten of them was to Cameron. Adams SO had three twenty-five, Natchez PDA has six thirty-nine. Also, I'm requesting travel for myself, Franklin and Marlon on October the twenty-third to the twenty-seventh to the nine-one-one conference in Beluston.
I have Franklin Chapman. I have Annette Philms and Marlon Swade. I do have a necessary paperwork in hand, and it's gonna be for the conference in Beluston. So I do have the paperwork in hand, what's the prayer of the board? So I do have the, uh, paperwork in hand, what's prepared at the board? It's been properly moved by Supervisor Gray and properly seconded by Supervisor Hutchins, will there be any discussion? If there be no discussion, all in favor, vote by using sign A, A. In a poll, names had signed right, motion carried now. All right.
Good morning, my name is Denise Price, I'm a purchase clerk for Adams County Board of Supervisors. First, I'd like to give an update on the sheriff to ten sheriff vehicles, we have two here now. All of them are at the outfit, we should be getting one or two more this week. Secondly, I'd like to ask about, did we make a decision on the pest control because Bay pest called and wanted to know if they should stop, um, spraying at the end of the month?
The one. Who was low there?
I think.
It was under, um, discussion because something brought up about, um, we didn't, when I talked to the state auditor, they said we didn't have to do.
We didn't have to have. We didn't have to have, yeah.
It was a decision you guys to make on your own.
Okay, so we want to use a local company?
It's between, yes, you can make a decision of that, um, we just have to know to inform Bay, because they're not gonna spray anymore at the end of the last day of this month, after the thirtieth.
There were three bidders, do you have those?
I have them in the office, yes.
Randy, do you have?
Um, um, we are, so we're gonna discuss it, and I think you're worth.
She gonna pull it up and we'll look at it.
Red pests, red pests was one, I think that was what you wanted to go with, uh, United States, but you all.
All right.
Okay.
We'll check.
Moving forward, um, we didn't have any bids for the debris removal, and for the one-year contract, may I have permission to advertise again for this?
You heard the request of the purchase clerk? She's gone, um, the question, um, we did the debris removal, she didn't have any, uh, bids. Here, uh, it's been properly moved by Supervisor Hutchins, can I get a second?
Second.
It's been properly settled by Supervisor Gray?
Yeah.
Will there be any discussion? If there be no discussion, all in favor, vote by using sign A.
Do you, do you know why they didn't bid? I know we had some interest in it.
Why we didn't bid?
Didn't get a bid.
On, I have no idea, I have.
There's a lot of people emailing and asking questions.
I have proof of it, that it was ran in the, um, paper. What happened, it was a line item that was amongst the other one-year line items, it was a line item, line item twenty-two, it said debris removal, I think you have a copy of it over here, Robbie? Debris removal, and, um, it said contact the purchase clerk for documentation, no one ever contacted.
Got it.
Okay.
And we'll readvertise, that's, that's.
Do it again?
We, we just made a motion.
Okay, thank you.
And we just got proof, we readvertise, so if they, she advertised, I don't know if it was in the paper and they didn't see it, but you know what I'm saying? It's, if you put it out there in the paper, nobody advertised, ain't nothing we can, that's a hard question, is why I said that, not to cut you off, but it's a hard question for her to answer, that, that you put a ad in the paper and nobody answers, you know what I'm saying, that's just a hard question.
And also, um, county, as the state website.
I'm saying that's all.
And sometimes if she does know, oh, because we met, you know, just had to get.
It was on the state and the county website it was.
Yeah.
Oh, no, yeah. Some people just missed those.
Yeah, some people just missed, so we'll readvertise.
Okay, this one. All right, next I'll go over, uh, the Kimsol bids, uh, for the six-tenth of a mile, it's a trial that Robbie and I were speaking about, a YouTube video. And we have, uh, spoke with the state auditor, and he said we had to get two bids, so I have two bids, one from seven arrow stabilizers for twelve thousand four hundred eighty-seven dollars and seventy-eight cent. The second bid is from Soul Kim, sixteen thousand two hundred thirty-four dollars. And, uh, lowest bid is with, um, seven arrow stabilizers.
Four of seven miles, twelve thousand what?
Four eighty-seven, seventy-eight.
All right. How much forever they can?
Six tenths.
Six tenths of a mile, they're gonna, they're gonna grind it up?
No, we, this, this gonna be railroad first.
It's gonna ride railroad.
They gonna.
Uh, some of this supposed to take.
They pour a liquid.
Scar fries on the, on the grater, and they supposed to.
Grave it up.
Grave it rose up, put it, they would come back, come back in the road. And supposed to turn it up. Uh, you know, this is, this is.
How long it's supposed to last?
This is, uh, we.
That's what you did.
Did like that all the time?
That's what I did, said how long it's supposed to last, do you all know?
This is kind of what they do up in North Dakota.
Yeah.
On a farm land, turn up the roads.
Yeah.
So they'll filter them off.
Yeah, you heard the request of the, uh, purchase clerk, can I get a motion? It's been properly moved by Supervisor Hutchins, can I get a second? Been properly settled by Supervisor Wilson, will there be any discussion? If there be no discussion, all in favor, vote by using sign A. In a poll, names had signed right, motion carried now, okay?
Okay, next we have the, um, we have two bids, I submitted three for the excavator, and for the lease purchase, and we have Delta, which is, um, a hundred, the total amount for the loan is one thirteen, two ninety-nine, ninety-four. For the three, for the three years, it's five point sixteen percent, for the five years, it's five point forty-two percent, and the other bank was cadenced. For three and five years, it's, uh, five point ninety-six percent. So Delta has the, uh, lowest bid for that.
Uh, you heard the, uh, request of the purchase clerk, what, what of these motions, they're properly moved by Supervisor Milton?
Say.
And they're properly settled by Supervisor Hutchins, Hutchins, will there be any discussion? If there be no discussion, all in favor, vote by using sign A. In a poll, names had signed right, motion carried now.
For the, for that particular one, if we don't get it closed out within this fiscal year, well, if we do get it closed out this fiscal year, which I think we will, we'll use the proceeds from the sale to pay that, that debt service, so that's keep it straight.
All right.
Okay, moving forward, I would like to go over the six-month bid and the one-year bids for the road department. My recommendation along with the road retirement for the one-year bid is.
How about, if you would, just to keep it straight, so while we don't have anything, would you call the bids out? Or you're not, not saying, would you call the bids out before you call the recommendation, that way, it won't be anybody feeling like we chose somebody.
Okay.
I just want, you know, be, keep the transparent.
Yeah, I apologize.
No problem.
Okay, so, um, one-year bid for the C R S two per gallon, three sixty-five, we only bid with ergon. C R S two P per gallon, three ninety a gallon, it's, the only bid was ergon. Okay. For three eight P gravel per yard was twenty-eight dollars a ton. A pack is the only, um, bidder. Washed gravel, twenty-eight dollars a ton, A pack the only bidder. All-size gravel, thirty dollars a ton, A pack the only bidder. Number seven crushed limestone, the only bidder was taro, forty-four dollars a ton. Number eight crushed limestone, the only bidder was taro, forty-four dollars a ton. Six-ten limestone, um, it was two bidders, Dozer and taro, and taro won the bid at thirty-five dollars a ton. Okay, limestone riprap, various size, we had two bidders, um, taro won the bid at forty dollars a ton.
What was the other bid?
Forty-six, okay, forty-six dollars.
No, just not, 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 not trying to do anything, but you know, we in the public, and some people just say, well, we, I just want to be just transparent, and you doing, you got it right there. So I'm not, I don't mean to trying to put you on the spot, I just want to make sure everything's transparent for the public.
Okay, I'll go back to six.
No, you fine.
Okay. Uh, railroad balance, we only had one bidder, forty-six dollars a ton, with Dozer. Washed limestone aggravate size fifty-seven, we only had one bidder, thirty-six dollars a ton. Dirk, we had two bidders, Dozer at two dollars per cubic yard, and Geronimo at sixty cent per cubic yard. And Geronimo had that, lowest bid. For granular, granular material clay gravel, we only had one bidder, eighteen seventy-five per cubic yard. In bridge construction complies, supplies, we only had Dozer for that. Uh, no bidders for bridge material, no bidders for general road size striping or continuous yellow, no bidding. Greater blades, we had two bidders, wear pants, we had minimum purchase of ten blades, a hundred and seventy-eight dollars per blade, and bucket at eighty-six thirty-two per blade. So A, bucket has that. Core sand, we had two bids, A pack at fifteen forty per cubic yard, and Dozer at eighteen seventy-five per cubic yard, and A pack has that. Okay, buck material freight, minimum twenty-four tons, we only had one bidder, M R I, a hundred and twelve per ton, five forty-four, fifty flat rate. And that is the conclusion one for one year. And then we on six months, for six months, um, surface course, we didn't have any bids. Surface course contractors bid, we only had one bid, that was A pack, a hundred and six dollars per ton. Tac coat, we only had one bid, it was five dollars a gallon with A pack. And on laydown of asphalt, we had only one bidder, A pack. Would you like for me to go over the, okay?
You got one bidder.
No more, right, okay. Leveling, we only had one bidder, A pack. Patching, six inch, a hundred square feet and above, eighty dollars a ton, that was only A pack, the other ones, we didn't have any bids. Okay, culverts, and all sizes and descriptions, Southern Culvert is the only bidder for that one. And buck concrete per yard, St. Catherine was the only bidder for that.
Okay.
And that's it.
Only, thank you.
Thank you.
The great monitor.
Excuse me?
The monitor. The great monitor.
Let's take it, uh, six months.
Oh, the great monitor with bucket. No.
What did, sir?
Okay, all right, the great monitor, we have, uh, Innovative Performance Construction Company.
Yeah, we gonna, we gonna do the year and six-month bid before we do anything.
This is on that.
This is on the six-month bid. Okay?
It's a year bid.
It's on the one-year bid.
Okay, but we gonna.
Yeah, it's part of.
One time, if we, you can go ahead.
Okay, that's, that's all we have right there, that was the last one of it.
Read it.
The great monitor.
Give them the name of it.
I said Innovative Performance Construction Company.
Yeah, okay.
All right, thank you.
All right. Yeah. All right, well, you heard the recommendation of the pur- purchase clerk, and which one would you want?
The great monitor.
I know that, and for the other two.
What? For the six months.
For the six months of being, not, for the six months and one year, all the other ones, which ones you recommend?
She recommended all, she told me all the ones that had, one was six month, ergon, for the C R S J, and C R S two P.
I didn't make sure.
Okay.
I, I, I wanted to make it clear, so, you know, we speak through our minutes, I want to make sure our record secretary had everything, because we had a long process, just trying to keep it, so if anything come up, our minutes will reflect what we did, all right? You heard the, uh, request of the purchase clerk, uh, can I get a motion?
Somebody.
Been properly moved by Supervisor Wilson, been properly settled by Supervisor Wilson, will there be any discussion? If there be no discussion, all in favor, vote by using sign A. In a poll, names had signed right, motion carried now, thank you.
Thank you.
I hate to push you too much, but we just tried to say that, all right? Departmental reports next.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The Broadway was signed, uh, it's been fixed, just want to let y'all know that. And also, uh, Thursday, Thursday morning, we had an R A P C drill with, uh, Franklin County, and it's gonna be on hash match, so just letting y'all know about the drill. And, one more thing, um, we just trying to see about housekeeping down in our area, we haven't had anybody been down that way probably for the last few weeks, so we're just asking.
Where?
And, uh, Civil Defense Mercy Management Office in our area down there with nine-one-one. And, uh, Civil Defense Office just asking about the housekeeping down there, down there in our area. Said we haven't had anybody down there to clean up for about the last few weeks.
You said which building?
Mercy Management.
Okay.
So, as I was saying, was out, and, uh, it was dead, so we'll get with the necessary people and get it corrected.
All right, that's all of that?
Yeah. All right, thank you.
I don't know, Mr. President, we might have to get like beyond Saturday, they paying him five million dollars, he packing his own office hours, so maybe somebody, someone must start cleaning up our own office.
Hey, Darryl.
Sorry.
When we on burn, is it still state?
It's still in effect, 'cause like I said, still dry.
By the governor, or by, or what's it, local?
No, it won't be, it expired the end of August.
All right, so it's governor's.
Governor, like I said, chick last week, and they, they still had to continue, you know, it's still dry, but like I said.
Yeah, I know, I just want to make sure that it hasn't expired.
No, for the note, last week, it was still in effect, and we still have some future, you know, just don't burn, 'cause like I said, we in the one, and it's still dry, you know, we don't want, you know, anything to get out of control, 'cause in a few states, there's a fire, and you got out of control, and, uh, a lot of acres and, you know, homes and all that, so we don't want that to happen here any more.
All right, thank you.
Good morning. Good morning, I just need to, uh, hire two people, uh, Marlon Grover.
Is these replacements?
Yeah, these, these, these are not, these are places, these are replacement people that have quit or terminated.
All right.
Uh, Tasha LaMitchell.
Okay.
And Marlon Grover.
All right, I do have a necessary paperwork in, uh, in hand, it's been properly signed, and, um, pay rate is twelve dollars an hour on both of them, so, one of them is rehired, are they correct?
None of them. Shouldn't be, and maybe, there may be a type of paper over here.
I just see why I had somebody put it on my paper.
I don't have any, even one of those rehired.
Somebody wrote it in on, on, on this one right here, that's why I asked you, on, uh, on who, Tasha LaMitchell, on Mitchell?
That's not a rehire for me, if she worked for the county department.
Okay.
My department, I have no knowledge of that.
She was to work for dispatch.
She's work for dispatch, yeah, I didn't.
Okay. Oh, she wasn't fired.
She wasn't fired, oh, yeah, me, she left.
Okay, we left her on, okay. All right, well, so, you heard the, uh, request of, did you, uh, attention?
Some of them.
Correct, um, it's been properly moved by Supervisor Hutchins and properly settled by Supervisor Wilson, will there be any discussion? If there be no discussion, all in favor, vote by using sign A. In a poll, names had signed right, motion carried now.
Thank you. Thanks, sir.
Good morning, Joe Bellin with the Intervention Court, uh, I presented to, uh, Ms. Lewis, uh, last week, uh, request to transfer some money between funds, uh, to pay some outstanding invoices, I received an email from the Bureau of Justice Administration saying that it was okay to do it. Uh, we were just waiting on that approval before we requested the money to be moved, eighteen thousand dollars, eighteen thousand one hundred from one account, thirteen hundred dollars from another account, so total, we're asking to be moved at nineteen thousand four hundred to clear outstanding invoices that are pending.
Ms. Lewis, uh, it's been properly, uh, checked, uh, acting administrator, you heard the request of. Ms. Lewis, uh, it's been properly, uh, checked, uh, acting administrator, you heard the request, uh, Mr. Bell, can I get them up? Been properly moved by Supervisor Wilson? Properly seconded by Supervisor Hutchins, would there be in discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. President, uh, you say we transferring nineteen thousand out of what account?
Within the same fund, yes, it's transferring nineteen thousand into one twenty-five, one seventy-four, five eighty-one from one twenty-five, one seventy-four, six oh three and six ten, so just moving money within the same.
So, we, we are paying this and we're gonna get reimbursed?
Yes.
So somebody, you keep up with when we get reimbursed or not?
That, Mr. Bellin does, yes.
Okay, so when we get reimbursed, are you coming back to let us know that we got reimbursed?
I've been just taking the checks that I've been getting for reimbursement over to a county.
So it come, it's on the dock?
It'll be on the AS four hundred on the cash balance. If your cash balances aren't where they're supposed to be, then you'll know that you haven't been reimbursed. Like we can look at right now and know whether they've been reimbursed or not.
It may show we got a checking balance system going on right now.
Yeah, that's, that's why the cash balance system, that's what it's for, is to make sure that you're getting receipts that you're getting as well as expenses you're supposed to have.
All right, one thing I'm saying, uh, uh, we always hear where money going out, we don't never hear about getting it back, I don't wanna have no situation like we had with the hangars, the money went out. We never hear about it coming back in to collect, 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 so keep up with the money.
All right, there be no more discussion, all in favor, vote by using sign of I. I, any opposed, names have same right, motion carry now.
And Joe, I did talk with Scott, he did review that, he said everything was good, so I'll send down that other one that was pending legal review from the last meeting along with this one today, okay?
That's what I was just about to ask.
Yeah, I got it. Well, I'll send it down after the meeting, if they can post it, yes.
Okay.
All right, that's it for me, thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Morning.
I'm Rick Barino, I'm with the Mental Health Treatment Program that just started, uh, August first, Shandau. Sometimes we have to, uh, refer our participants, uh, for inpatient services, cause they're in a higher need or higher risk. So I brought for y'all a memorandum of understanding between us and the West Mississippi Harbor Services, Belmont Gardens, uh, to, to contract services, inpatient, inpatient services with them as needed from our participants.
God, you have a couple of them?
Yes, they sent to me Wednesday, Thursday, so it's fine.
Now, you had time to review it?
I did, that, and it's fine, what I do have a question about on your end is the reimbursements. Have you, have you requested reimbursements from Mental Health Corp?
Uh, not yet.
When are you gonna do that?
If I may, uh, he's, his will fall under AOC as well, so once we get the invoice from the facility and the county pays it, we submit paperwork to AOC to seek the reimbursement.
We are already negative forty-three thousand dollars in that balance, which is not alarming, but that means reimbursement from last week to go in.
Right, it's, it's, we're, we're sending this stuff in.
You're gonna send it jointly with drug court reimbursement?
No, there's, there's a script, I'm just helping him with A, the AOC part of the budget. So AOC is, he has his own AOC budget that will be reimbursed, we're waiting on them, they have to process all the paperwork and send it back.
You've sent her reimbursements?
Yes, we've sent, we're sending the reports due by the twentieth.
So by the twentieth, you'll send in a reimbursement for AOC?
For August, the month before, they, it's due the twentieth of the next month from what was spent the previous month. And August just ended, we're in the middle of September, by the twentieth, it has to be due to AOC.
Who are you gonna get with to send your report in for reimbursement?
Uh, Rick will do it and then he'll be signed up by Joe Lockhold and sent in to AOC.
Rick, who are you gonna get with to make sure you send it off right? Mary Kay? And y'all need to go ahead and get that in, cause it's due in two days. We're ninety thousand dollars in the red, so we need that money back.
And it's gonna go right there mercy for the first.
But you hadn't submitted the request and it didn't sound like he knew that we were.
I had submitted a request for thirty, thirty something thousand dollars and they have not sent a check yet.
So the request has been sent for mental health?
For thirty thousand, for the first, uh, for all the furniture and equipment that was purchased, that was sent in, uh, back in August for, uh, July.
Okay.
So we're waiting on them to send us the money.
Okay, I didn't understand that you sent the request.
And we're about to send in another request for, I think fourteen thousand dollars.
Yeah, which, that's about your monthly expenses.
Right.
You know, that's what I, and I, and I say this, I, I say this all the time, in, in, um, meetings, all the time. A whole lot of this, and it's not pointing a finger at anybody, it's just trying to make it better. Let's see, can we get a clear line of communication? So that way, if you come in here and ask, that, and, and we approve something, if, if this, if this would be, uh, when you do submit a request, at least the county administrator right now or the attorney. If it's some kind where we can get checks and balances, so we'll know the request has been sent in, therefore we won't come up in a media, public meeting and have a different question if there's not asking too much.
It's been requested, we're waiting.
Yeah, yeah, but that's, know what I'm saying?
That's not.
They just didn't know what was going on, so that's all I was saying, if we can just communicate a little clearer and that'd be fine, we ain't worried about what's in the past, we gonna move forward with it, all right?
If the request been made, he'll come in.
Definitely, uh, so you heard the request, now I need a motion. Somebody? It's been properly moved by Supervisor Wilson, can I get a second? Can I get a second?
Second.
Been properly seconded by Supervisor Milton, will there be in a discussion? If there be no discussion, all in favor, vote by using sign of I. Any opposed, names have same right, motion carry now. That's why I asked, if we can get a community, if this, this, we can, we can get, essentially, we know, I'm with Mary Kay.
Good morning, Mary Kay, I'm just gonna use scores, I have two, um. What are these things, I have two grants that we received that need to be signed today, this is, the first one is our mentoring grant with workforce CMP D D. And, um, I've already brought this to y'all before, this is just the official paperwork for it to be signed. That our contract with them, that we will provide the service. Now, that's gonna be Fund One Thirty-One, which has already been assigned, just needs to be signed, I'll give it to you. Oh, yes, it just, the paperwork finally came in, it's already been approved.
So it's already in mint, you have?
This is a three-year grant, our first year, they are giving us one hundred twenty-nine thousand seven hundred sixty-eight.
Let me do that, yeah.
First year.
So, I'm still, I'm gonna ask for a motion for the day, besides the paperwork, can I get them up? It's been properly moved by Supervisor Wilson, properly seconded by Supervisor Hutchins, would there be discussion?
Yeah, so, Mr. President, you say this is a three-year, uh, grant and the first year is one hundred and twenty-nine thousand seven hundred sixty-eight?
Yes, sir.
First year?
Yes, sir.
So what is the second year?
We don't have that, that'll come next year, we'll do another budget and we'll sign another one for each year.
Up to how much?
I believe the whole thing was around five hundred thousand.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right.
All right, after that one, I have my next one, which is through Department, DPSP, Department of Division of Public Safety and Planning. This is our Fund One Twenty-four that we currently have, last year, it ended in Ju- June thirtieth, this one runs from July to June. This one ended and I still had eighteen thousand three hundred thirty-four dollars left in the budget that had not been spent. So they have approved us to get an extension to spend that money. So that one needs to be signed too, it's all here and the, with the budget of what they moved some money around.
All right, um, you heard the request of Ms. Mary Kay, can I get a motion? Say, Mary. It's been properly moved by Supervisor Wilson?
Second.
It's been properly seconded by, um, Supervisor Milton, would there be in a discussion? If there be no discussion, all in favor, vote by using sign of I. Any opposed, names have same right, motion carry now.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Mary Kay?
Yes.
Thank you for going above and beyond the call of duty with these gentlemen.
No problem.
Seemed like they were struggling.
Yeah, but I'm, that's why I'm here, here you are, no problem.
Thank you.
That's not unusual, I asked Mary Kay.
Well, you're doing a new job and filing all that paperwork. All right.
Good morning, boys.
Good morning.
Had a lot this morning, uh. Well, we have another meeting before the end of the month, close out, more POs or whatever, or like we normally do. Another thing I have.
You mean you're gonna drag us back up here for something?
I'm getting it tough, if I don't, my budget be busted next year before we start.
Okay.
So, uh, that's what I was gonna bring up, if y'all noticed on the yearly six months, I know y'all will see them every day, but ninety percent of the items did go up this year from last year. So if my budget gets the same from last year, we did the same we did, I'll be over again, so, uh, that was something I was gonna bring before the board this morning to let you know everything is going up and most of our yearly six months bid did go up. And other than that, that's all I have, let y'all have something.
Uh, I, I just got, uh, that, that, uh. On Monday, there was a way pulling digits out there, Fleming had it, had he took it?
He got caught up, he got a little bit, uh, I think Monday, sounded like he carried, not Monday, one day he got off early and, uh. Sounded like him pulling digits right there, carried it part alone, they gonna give him some more, but they have got it, so.
All right. I'm curious about the, uh, dirt pits, where is the wrong motion?
Right across some belt line, across the cinder, uh, field.
Okay, they, they trying to level some land, I'm just trying to figure out how sixty cents versus two dollars, it just.
I would say I don't know, but.
It's a little, it's a big difference.
Grabbing one up like four, five hours ago.
Are, are we still pursuing, uh, a joint venture with the city on cutting thereby coal in and, uh?
I called up with the city, I asked them.
But this is such a good deal, I don't know why we wouldn't just continue that for a while, as long as you have a place.
I talked to my spokesman this morning and, uh, got the combination to his gate, I'm gonna meet him sometime this week to go in to look around, but he said it's plenty.
Yeah, okay, all right, that's all I have.
Mr. President, uh, where are we on the, uh, EWP closeout?
We got everything closed out, uh, spoke with Mr. Ford this morning, Norman needed a few pictures, Mr. Ford submitted some pictures, uh, to him. And everything should be good on our closeout, I think we did meet the deadline to get, get our reimbursement, uh, for EWP's on those sites, uh. Talking about reimbursement of leaners and hangers, I texted me, like I said, on the leaners and hangers, we were one point six, we have about five hundred something thousand left to be over there. We should be getting that pretty quick, I hope, uh, everything's been submitted, return checks, uh, she showed copies of those, she got those a few weeks back, so we should be getting that back too, Mr. Gray, so we oughta be good on.
What is the number on the EWP closeout?
Say it again.
What is the number on the EWP closeout? Uh, are we trying to get reimbursed?
About eight hundred thousand, almost seven hundred something, almost like eight thousand, you know, what you buy, uh, eight hundred and thirty, forty thousand somewhere along there, Mr. Gray.
Thank you, sir.
And that money will go into the active fund and you use that to cover our costs and what?
I'm just wanna make sure that we get.
Yes, sir. So, see? I mean, until the money comes in, that's it.
And then like I said, the contract, you mentioned Morgantown Road, he did text me this morning, uh, and I think Mr. Ford had let him know about the water lines or Harris County had contacted him about, uh, moving the water line. So he wanted me to call him after the meeting and I told him I would.
Mr. President, let me ask another question, Scott, because we may have lifted contract up here and we supposed to be trying to, uh, work with them to come down to the ten percent where we can either don't get started or have to rebuild it or whatever, in case what may be, what were you asking?
I just asked, it was more.
It's the, it's the, one of, one of my emails.
I actually have a meeting with Bill this afternoon, I don't have a specific time, but we have texted and we're getting together on that to do it. He did ask me to ask George, which George gave his report about the utility lines moving, so now we know that utility, utility line's gonna have to move and so forth, but I'm talking to Bill. The items that we had in the discussion, I think.
Can we?
They can all be done.
They can be altered, so we can.
Are they gonna do it?
Well, the way it seems, he's working on it, but we can make the changes that he was asking and, and, okay.
Okay. I think that's not good, I gotta go now to Brian and get the city through it and get it through.
Okay, I'm glad, cause I had a neighbor who was watching me Monday over there and I told him I'd get back and then let him know where we at on Morgantown Road, thank you.
And I'm happy to go there with you, I know, you know.
Robert, why, yeah, well, you don't have to be, you can go there, it's, uh, I have two, uh, the, uh, dump site, legal dump site, is that right? Tire grants, the tire grants.
Tire grants.
The tire grants, I have, uh, one reimbursement to get our money back, one is for a hundred and fifty-two dollars and the other one's for eleven hundred and fifty-one dollars and four cents, I need a motion, there it is. It's been properly moved by Supervisor Milton and properly seconded by Supervisor Wilson, would there be in a discussion? If there be no discussion, all in favor, vote by using sign of I. Any opposed, names have same right, motion carry now. All right, Department report, go ahead, Mr..
Good morning, um, one update, just to let you know, we have started construction on the Maynoya Bluff Site, number two and number three. Um, so we've already got started on that, um, Monday of last week, um, those living road repairs, um, we've already submitted, they were included in the reimbursement, but the contract students have paid, uh, for the repair that was done to living road. Um, that's twenty-three thousand six hundred eight dollars and twenty-six cents.
Is that the, um?
The living road.
Living red site.
Living road site, what site, you have a normal site, a normal site?
That was included in group four, just in addition to what they would be done.
It was submitted with this, uh, Thursday, when, uh, they submitted the MRI, we get the reimbursement, that's a whole part of it, uh.
All right, so that's the request, yes, all right, you heard the recommendation of, how much?
Twenty-three thousand six hundred eight dollars and twenty-six cents.
All right, you heard the request, uh, the engineer, can I get them up? Then properly moved by Supervisor Wilson and properly seconded by Supervisor Hutchins, would there be in a discussion?
I may have got the funding for it, I don't already.
Yeah, that's part of the original contract, part of the.
All right, would there be any more discussion? If there be no more discussion, all in favor, vote by using sign of I. Any opposed, names have same right, motion carry now.
And the last thing I have is a permanent request from Cable One, um, they want to replace two rided poles along, uh, Lower Wilshire Road. And so we're asking the board's permission to allow them to place those two poles in the county right away.
What's your, is, you okay with that?
Yes. Their existing pole, they just replaced them, they got a ride, so.
And did you get your fees to over the range so we can make sure we, okay, make sure we stay home? This is the new ordinance that we had to.
Yeah, so can I get a motion? It's been properly moved by Supervisor Wilson?
Sorry.
It's been properly seconded by Supervisor Milton, would there be in a discussion? If there be no discussion, all in favor, vote by using sign of I. Any opposed, names have same right, motion carry now. All right.
And if anyone you see for the pre-award documents for the new EWP, just let me know so we can be started.
And this, and this, this, uh, George?
Yes, sir.
This is for, where are we on the, that last back in project, I think the Armored Road and you had a couple of them in there?
Yeah, we're just talking about Armored Road, Little, Little, yes, we're gonna survey one to start the, uh, design.
All right, I'll just check.
One question, Mr. Ford. One question, Mr. Ford. Uh, I know October seventeenth was the deadline. I know we started, you're gonna supply it for.
We are, thank you.
That's on the last for EWP.
Alright, and, and moving forward, without some, I think that, uh, I know the last time we, we didn't have, we, you know, we got in a crunch right now, we think JKS was, uh, the last set of engineers and they was helping submit it. And I think, you know, we was right in that crunch, about eight hundred thousand. But moving forward, y'all, have y'all got come up with a plan so we won't be in that position again?
So what we do is, just like we gave lower, lower, low water bridge roads, since we submitted the invoice to you all, we submitted a reimbursement request to the county for that as well.
Thank you. Alright, just trying to keep our checks and balances in order right now.
We're gonna take care of it. We want you to get a reimbursement submitted in on CAs and we submit our invoices you as well.
We appreciate it. Thanks.
And George, we did get a bit of a permit request from, um, Cable One's sparklight, and I'm just waiting for the, the plans and specs to get back when I deal with them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ford. Alright, Department of Reports next.
Good morning, boys.
Good morning.
I wanna have a few things this morning. Uh, the first thing is, he's, and I think, um, Ms. Lewis has this already requesting the transfer. You have it already up there?
Yes, sir.
Alright. From line item one dash two hundred, that's nine one nine, to line item zero zero one, that's two hundred, that's four seven five, thousand dollars.
Alright, you heard the request of the sheriff and Ms. Lewis already had. Can I get a motion? It's been properly moved by Supervisor Hudson, properly seconded by Supervisor Wilson. Would there be any discussion? If there be no discussion, all in favor, vote by using the sign of I. In a poll, nades had signed right, motion carried now.
I also have, uh, three new hires, uh, for the jail. The first one, and I think you have, is, uh, President Gaines.
I do.
The first one is, uh, Elliot Green, a transport officer position at a rate of fourteen fifty. The second one is Alexis Jones at a rate of thirteen twenty-three, and Asia Carradine at a rate of thirteen twenty-three.
I do have our necessary paperwork and has been properly signed by the, uh, human resource. Uh, can I get a motion?
These are new hires in the abundance here.
One of them is a rehire, Elliot Green, and the other two.
No move.
It's been properly moved by Supervisor Gray.
Same.
It's been properly seconded by Supervisor Hudson. Would there be any discussion?
I understand. Abundance already there.
Yes, already. This is what's applied to have to be accounted, setting up budgets and places and everything. There's nothing, no new positions.
So if, any more discussion? All in favor, vote by using the sign of I. In a poll, nades had signed right, motion carried now.
I got that, sir.
The other thing I have is, I want you all to know that I spoke to, I actually called Attorney Slobodas well, and we spoke to a neighboring sheriff down in Louisiana, in reference to the Good Samaritan insurance program that was brought up. And after talking to the sheriff down there and hearing what his employees had to say over the last year of using it, we are, we're all in on that program. And so I asked the attorney Slobodas to, to move forward, whatever we need to do next, and join in that program, if he wants to elaborate any on it or not.
So this is, uh, one of the ways or strategies we can do to decrease our healthcare costs. Also happens to be a pretty good, uh, plan for the employees themselves. There are certain employees that have critical health issues and, uh, they have to be pretty, uh, gross, not, not like, uh, not gross and disgusting, gross isn't, uh, expensive. Uh, normal claims won't be able to do it, but if they qualify, there's a program that we pay the program, you know, what our, uh, reinsurance cost would be normally, and they then solicit funds and donations and so forth and pay, uh, out-of-pocket expenses and so forth of that claim, uh, that are, that are above that cost. So, uh, the employee that qualifies wouldn't have really, they wouldn't have any out-of-pocket, really wouldn't have any expenses whatsoever. And then our expenses would be capital, we pay, uh, that. Figure, and if they actually don't go into our insurance plan, they have their own separate plan. Uh, it is something that's voluntary with the employee, um, so it's not something that they can be forced to do. Our costs are a set amount, and it's only based on how many employees join in and do it. Um, if our top two claims, for instance, decide to do it, the savings will be pretty significant, probably say at least half a dollar.
Is it just for the sheriff department or could it be for, is this just?
Is it just for claimants, both sheriff and otherwise, that qualify?
Of the employees, of the county could not be a part of it?
Really, any employee that would qualify, uh, can do it, but it's just not, there's just not that many employees that are gonna qualify. And they want to, that, that actually.
Okay.
Um, if y'all would like, I could, um, you know, I could send it to you late Friday so I'd have a chance to review. Y'all could approve it pending legal approval, knowing that it's a fifty thousand dollar cost per, uh, person that gets on it. There's a little bit, uh, price reduction if you have a family on it. I just don't think we're gonna have any families on it. God, that's pretty comfortable what our claims are, so. It'll probably be about a hundred grand if, if we can get two claimants on it.
It's gonna benefit the county.
Trust me.
It's gonna benefit the county.
Motion to allow him to.
To check it through, yeah.
Well, I got the contract, I just sent it. Just approve the contract, any little work.
If we qualify, you're right, yes.
Alright, uh, you heard the motion, I think the motion has been already properly made by Supervisor Hudson. And been properly seconded by Supervisor Gray. Would there be any discussion? If there be no discussion, all in favor, vote by using the sign of I. In a poll, nades had signed right, motion carried now.
Y'all hear anything lately? It's not, there's no terror really, one thing. It's a good day to be a cowboy.
I'm not gonna tell you.
Just got an update from, uh, from the leaners and the hangers. I said maximum sixty days. I submitted it on nine seven, so we should be getting something.
They submitted up, the chair?
On nine seven, yeah, so it should be, you know, at sixty days.
Oh, sixty days.
Yeah.
Alright. Department of Reports, there be no more Department of Reports, uh, public comment? And public comment? Alright, we come to the table. Start with Supervisor Gray.
Yes, sir, Mr. President, uh, Mr. Attorney, um, on the maps that the young man is supposed to be getting together, uh, the district maps online. Uh, I think he got the color code correct, but he haven't changed. Uh, when you hit on one, it's still coming up. It's District Four now, but it's still coming up District Five. So could you get with him to let him know, uh, once you hit on each and every one of these houses, it's still saying that they are in District Five, but they're in District Four. And I think he got the color code right, but he just don't have the other part right when you hit on one of them.
On the G O portal, repeat?
Yes, ma'am.
Gotcha.
And, uh, Robbie, uh, I got a request from a young lady of thirteen, South Sunflower, Balsami Road, and so we need to check on that. Um, uh, when are we gonna, uh, deal with the county administrator and the veteran officer position?
They're better than re-advertise by veteran service. We did, actually, let me check and see where they published it. I think September, I think Sept- September twenty-seventh is the deadline. I think that sounds about right. I need to check it before.
September twenty-seventh.
On the side of veterans.
Okay, what are we gonna do about the county administrator?
Have anyone with that application, so?
I mean, we can't continue to just put this to the side. This is a very important position, uh, uh, it's individual is responsible for keeping up with our finances and is responsible for keeping up with EWP projects, money being reimbursed, and a whole lot of things. So, uh, we need to get on the ballboard. I mean, we can't keep pushing this to the side. Uh.
Can I ask a question, I'm, are we gonna re-advertise or are we gonna go from the applications that we received?
My, my deal is this. We keep saying we gonna re-advertise on these positions that's coming up, and we haven't even interviewed nobody that, that put in an application. We don't know if they a good person or not, and we just looking at them and say, well, I don't want them, we gonna re-advertise veteran. I don't want them, we gonna re-advertise. How, how we gonna know what we got if we don't actually talk and interview somebody? You might have a, a diamond in the rough. We don't know, 'cause we, we, we not even interviewing nobody. Uh, last thing, uh, I think, uh, we need to be real, real careful with this COVID deal. And I, I, I don't know, but street talk is we've had employees that work for the county that had COVID, which we used to get something that's letting us know if we have employees that is affected by COVID. Well, we can adjust ourselves accordingly, because, uh, people walking around, you don't know what they got, and they ain't telling you nothing. And at least if they work for the county and, and they test positive for COVID, then we need to know that. Uh, I'm making a motion that, um, so we're planning to have a meeting, except tomorrow.
Yeah.
Well, I'll let you do that. I'll let you. And last, uh, my simply go out to the Augusta family, the Meredith family, the Washington family, the Bryce family, and, uh, the chief of police of Flowwood Pass.
Supervisor Hudson.
Okay, I don't think I have this approved for the travel for the Southeast Planning and Development District. Uh, that's for the board members and, uh, that's for supervisor, myself and supervisor gang sit on that board, uh, on that board. And it's for tomorrow, September the ninth tenth, in Tyler Town, Mississippi.
You heard the request of Supervisor Hudson?
That's a motion.
Can I get a motion? It's been properly moved by Supervisor Hudson and properly seconded by Supervisor Gray. Would that be in discussion?
I just want to let people know there's no, let them know there's no expense. That would occur.
Yeah. Um, be no more discussion, all in favor, vote by using the sign of I. I, in a poll, nades had signed right, motion carried now.
That's all I have.
Supervisor Milton.
Uh, I just wanna keep the Calhoun family in our prayers. Little boy across the river who passed, Mike Watson, Calhoun, uh, little kid had a rough life. And I just wanna keep praying for his family. I can't imagine what they're going through. That's all I have.
Certainly. Oh, I, I really didn't have anything, uh, Robby's pretty much taken care of everything I had coming up over the last week or two.
Deputy Clerk, say it again. Chancery.
I have, I have a couple items. Um, this, uh, Sharika Miller with the pool cannot be here today, but they were needing, or she was, has requested an increase of six thousand dollars, which will come from the general fund for chemicals because of that.
That last, when you leave this week, you already did.
Um, that was another one. So this, they're already, they've already expended that. This is an additional six thousand. It's in the negative.
Pool been closed?
They said they have to keep the chemicals.
Yeah, I know, I know they need to keep it up, but is the pool open? Is the pool even open?
It was.
It's usually open until, um.
But it, it had been closed, I know.
It had reopened.
Several people had asked me what was going on, but the pool had been closed later, and I just wondered, to anybody to know why the pool had been closed.
Well, Mr. President, I think the reason, I'm just saying, the reason I think it may be closed because of the lifeguard situation. Most of them is high school kids.
Okay.
And they probably gone back to school, and I don't, I don't, I don't know.
Okay, I just, I just didn't know.
I don't know, but you can look into it, that's, that's what I think.
I just had a question on, alright.
So these two, right now, these two funds only have like two hundred and fifty dollars in them, and they're about to have to purchase more chemicals to keep the pool going, you know? And I, and I told her, our fiscal year is about to end in September, so I, she said that they, they still need it, um, to purchase.
So what's your?
No, I mean, can we got a pool, if, 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 the less you have to put in it, the more it is. If you let the water get really, really bad, then you're gonna have to put more and more chemicals in it. So if you catch it before it get bad, then that's the less, I guess, you had to put in to keep the water at a level where it's supposed to be. Now, uh, the city gonna pay half of this, right?
Yes, I reveal.
Okay.
Now, the segment of Ralph is the one that's actually requesting this, right? Ralph Daniel?
Uh, I, I just got through Sharika, because she's the manager. Yes, he's the one, actually. I think Hannah's still coming out every day.
Alright, what's the plan there, the board?
No move.
It's been properly moved by Supervisor Gray and properly seconded by Supervisor Hudson. Would there be any more discussion? If there be no more discussion, all in favor, vote by using the sign of I. In a poll, nades had signed right, motion carried now.
Okay, um, I have the, Chuck cannot be here today. He asked that we spread, which is in accordance with the statute. We have to spread the combined budget across the minutes. We're also gonna do the publication as well and just be to have the combined budget spread across the minutes.
You heard the request of the Chancellor Clerk, can I get a motion? And properly moved by Supervisor Hudson. Properly seconded by Supervisor Wilson. Would there be any discussion?
I missed combined budget, what?
Uh, it's just the budget that we voted for you on the twelfth. We have to do a combined budget that he submits to us.
Oh, you Chuck, you mean the?
Yes, yes. Just to spread, just rather across the minutes.
Would there be any more discussion? If there be no more discussion, all in favor, vote by using the sign of I. In a poll, nades had signed right, motion carried now.
Um, have the tax reduction, um, settlement for August twenty twenty-three through the Chancery Clerk's office. Need to have that spread across the minutes.
You heard the request of the Chancellor Clerk, can I get a motion?
No move.
And properly moved by Supervisor Gray. Properly seconded by Supervisor Wilson. Would there be any discussion? If there be no discussion, all in favor, vote by using the sign of I. In a poll, nades had signed right, motion carried now.
Um, just bringing up before the board, the, um, spoke with our new region, and they have asked that the board, if they can today approve the two or authorize the two new mental health commissioners. It's my understanding that the other counties have authorized the Chancery Clerk, um, to be on the board. Adams County and I believe Warren County, they're asking for two commissioners. I don't know if the sheriff, yes, so I don't, that, that's just.
So, would the sheriff and the Chancellor Clerk sit on the mental health board?
I'm all in.
Okay.
So, it's, it's up to the board, so if it's properly moved by Supervisor Gray and properly seconded by Supervisor Hudson, that the Chancellor Clerk and the sheriff be our two board members? Uh, would that be in discussion? If there be, be no more discussion, all in favor, vote by using the sign of I. In a poll, nades had signed right, motion carried now.
Um, and just, uh, for our business or whatever, um, with Mr. Belling and Rick, I've asked Joe, if he could to submit to us, I don't know if it's a spreadsheet or a Word document or whatever, showing, of course, we know what expenditures are, are being made and stuff, obviously, in there, in our accounting system. But if they could submit something to us showing when they make the reimbursement request, and it also let us know, um, when those, those funds have been received. With, with most of our grants, we keep a spreadsheet that says expended this date, request reimbursement this date, receiving this date, or whatever. So maybe that's something that, that he can work with Mary Kay on, on getting us a spreadsheet, you know, submitting it to us, you know, bi-monthly or monthly or whatever, just to keep the work pressed, yes. So I, I'll make that process.
Alright, thank you. Alright, that's, that's, that's it. Alright, Mr. Turner?
Yes, Scott, a, in the agreement, uh, there was a.
Hold on, hold on, so make sure by the time we finish over, make sure Mr. Gray, Mr. Hudson could hear.
Um, Deerfield Road, there's a company that was coming in, doing some oil play, they agreed to fix the road as well as post a bond, um. Um, the company's Bay Correction Gas LLC, uh, like, permission to approve the, in the agreement, spread across the minutes.
You heard the request of the attorney?
Move.
Can I get a motion? It's been properly moved by Supervisor Gray and properly seconded by Supervisor Hudson. Would there be any more discussion? If there be no more discussion, all in favor, vote by using sign of A. Any opposed, may they have signed right motion carried now.
Well, took all the way, most of my stuff from the meeting, except the M-DOT agreement that we reviewed, it's standard M-DOTs. Um, thanks, will you, your, 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 uh, president?
Alright, uh, he had reviewed the M-DOT, uh, that's from last meeting. Alright, he's already, uh, reviewed it. Did we make a motion pending? Was it just, give me, uh, I need a motion to be at the signing of the paperwork. The M-DOT agreement from last meeting, it's been properly looked over by attorney. It's been properly moved by Supervisor Hudson and properly seconded by Supervisor Gray. Would there be any discussion? If there be no discussion, all in favor, vote by using sign of A.
A.
Any opposed, may they have signed right motion carried now. That's it. Uh, Mr. Turner?
Uh, the clean proposals, the John Chance can go over them, because we got a new fiscal year coming in.
Alright, we need a recommendation. I mean... I thought we was gonna, I thought last meeting we was gonna do a little investigation on what they're doing and go back over and approve. We don't have any recommendation? Huh?
What is the recommendation?
We don't have it. I was asking for one.
So, y'all wanna look back at the, the numbers. I did reach out to the references, or to at least two references for each one of the companies. Um, I did get pretty good feedback from, from most of them. Um, I haven't really talked to Scott about this. I don't know if the board would wanna do some sort of probationary period or something for ninety days with, whenever work don't wanna go in.
But we definitely need to, I, I, I mean, I, I was just speaking for me as the president. Uh, I definitely would, would recommend a ninety-day probationary period for who we, uh, for whatever company that we, uh, pick, because if you got somebody and you, you lock them in a contract, uh, for a year or so, and they don't do the proper cleaning, then where we at, we, we, we locked, we locked in a contract for a year, and the deal is not being cleaned. So, I would definitely recommend that.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Attorney, with the contract that we give these people, so we don't put in there a way that in thirty days we can get out of it, and in thirty days they can get out of it, or whatever the case may be.
Uh, I would want it so that we can get out of it, and they can't. Would be ideal, preferable.
Say what?
I would want it to be so we can get out of it, but they can't. That would be preferable. I'm, I'm agreeing thirty days, and then all of a sudden, price hike on. We want to be pretty consistent on it.
So, what you recommend?
Well, let's, if you want us to come back with a recommendation, there's one that was a lower price. The price just seemed, didn't make a lot of sense to me. I would like to talk to them and have them walk me through how they propose to get the, the work done for the price they gave.
Alright, well.
And I got the number from Randy. I just, we need to call him.
So, this is what, this is what I recommend, so we can go. We, we have, we do have a meeting coming back up. We gotta have a meeting to approve this budget correctly. I mean, to prove something, what, uh, the, the year in the dock. So, we got to have a meeting before October third to approve the closeout of the year. I would recommend that the attorney and the acting administrator have a, a check with attorney, 'cause the acting administrator have. That him talk to these folks and bring us a recommendation on that meeting. If that's fine with the rest of the board, what's the plan of the board?
And I'll, I'll do that this afternoon, and, and I'll...
You got a problem with this, Mr. President?
Okay, I, you know, um, that, I mean, we, we told them what they were bidding on, to know what they're bidding on. So, I, you know, but you're gonna talk to them, make sure, make sure they understand it.
Yeah.
And, and the board can certainly go ahead and tell me to go with the lowest one. I just want us to be set up for success, not...
Yeah, and that's what I said. So, if you, if, you can give him the, what, a week or two? It's gonna be a week, right?
Call him this afternoon.
And I know, but I'm saying it's gonna be a week before we get back, before the closeout.
Yeah.
So, we give him a week, we, we'll be back in a week. Is that fine with the board?
Yeah, uh, Mr. President, uh, Scott, uh, I, I understand what everybody concerned about. So, when you get with this individual, uh, please break it down to him where baby can understand what we want him to do, where there won't be no misunderstanding at the price, at the price that he submitted. I know everybody along about how low it was, but if he understands what we want him to do, and he gonna do it for that, then if the resume is out of his world, he had a awesome resume from companies that, uh, that he served, uh, uh, cleaned up for him. So, I don't know. I mean...
Yeah, this is not unusual. We, we did the same thing whenever we have a bid on construction labor, when there's substantial difference. Make sure we do it there, 'cause that's, they can get out of contract.
Oh, is, is there a place in there, if there's something that happens over and beyond their normal cleaning spectrum? I mean, like, like, um, let's say bathroom floods or whatever. I mean, they're... What, 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 we, we bringing a separate cleaning?
So, you're gonna have your, your two here that can handle light, safety skills, things of that sort, keep the trash in check, and, you know? So, we, we have confirmed, they, they all have liability policies. Scott and I had, had talked about and thought it was a good idea to make sure that they, if they're not bonded, to get them bonded. But, but all of them have submitted their reliability policies, uh, coverage, and as well as references and all of that to us, so.
I think we're gonna put in a contract also a ninety-day, uh, probation.
Definitely, I did recommend it. Alright.
Well, Mr. President, I, I'm gonna say this. Uh, I mean, uh, with the resume, and I, I don't know why we keep going for another whole two weeks. I, I just figured, pending Scott, discussion with him. And he the one submitted the contract. I mean, that's what the, that's what this board wanted. Uh, uh, somebody to come in and, and, and clean these buildings, and see like, what, what I understand is gonna be a win-win for us.
Well, I don't, only thing, um, let me, let me make this.
You can change it, B.
What, what?
Yeah, and we're, we keep talking about it, and saying like, we're wanting to do that.
No, but I, I don't think, I, I mean, I don't know. I speak for me. I just wanted to make sure they lock him bid, uh, for his contract. Somebody don't come in and give us a half-clean job. We've been coming in here right now. The, the, the digital had been cleaned. Uh, you got nine-one-one had been cleaned down there. You, so, so I'm just trying to get it straight on the front end. If y'all wanna go ahead and make a motion, before Scott talk to him, make a motion now, cap.
Mr. President, I understand what you're saying, but you can pick the highest bidder and get the same thing.
I understand. That's why, that's why I asked that, on the recommendation, that Brandon, I mean, excuse me, uh, chancellor clerk and acting administrator, Brandon Lewis and attorney, go back and do the references and go ahead. But if y'all wanna make a motion, I got it on the floor.
Okay, with a performance, a ninety-day performance.
That's right.
Not a bond, but a performance, period. Okay.
So, what's, so what's, what's, what's the recommendation of the board?
That we do, we go ahead and hire that company on a ninety-day performance?
Yeah.
Alright, you heard the request of Supervisor, uh, uh, Wilson? You, uh, you heard it, it was seconded by Supervisor Gray. Would there be any more discussion? If there be no more discussion, all in favor, vote by you and sign of A. It, uh, any name, motion carried now. Alright, Scott, what else you got?
Can I make a suggestion too, that we go ahead, I don't know if we're gonna go ahead and advertise for to hire two other people?
Two people what? No, we already got, it's already, people just got two.
We already, stick with you to two, don't be?
I don't know. I mean, we was...
No, so you don't even know who the two gonna be?
So, why would we?
We'd be, we'll just turn it on that.
I was gonna say, but anyway, move forward. What you got? What else you got to do?
Oh.
Week. You got?
The advertisements for the garbage and waste fund to increase that. Do you need to go ahead and do that for three weeks to, before that can be adopted?
You heard the request of?
Yes, sir.
There's an advertisement to increase the fees for the garbage and waste?
So, move.
You heard the request of the attorney, been properly moved by Supervisor, uh, Gray. Can I get a second? Properly seconded by Supervisor Hudson. Would there be any discussion? If there be no discussion, all in favor, vote by you and sign of A. Uh, any opposed, may, what's his name? May have, uh, uh...
What's that one?
Uh, he's, uh, he's opposed, motion carried, you know? Okay. What you got to do?
Randy gave that right through me all.
Sorry, you'll give us the bottom of the stack.
Alright, what is this, Scott? Is this in my folder right here? This set off program, what, what's this?
Corvette requested she's the debt service, um, set off person. The NAS, uh, has a program where, it's also approved by the state, where we submit some information over, and if somebody owes money to the county, uh, then they withhold the Department of Revenue's tax.
This what we did last year?
It's the same thing.
The same thing we did last year. So, we had this set off program. Can I get a motion?
So, move.
Been properly moved by Supervisor Hudson, who seconded? Gray. Properly seconded by Supervisor Gray. Would there be any discussion? If there be no more discussion?
Oh, discussion, I, okay. How successful was that? Does that mean anybody?
Didn't tell you, but it isn't really cost us that much to do, and I think it's, I think it's one of those things where the revenue comes out, and a lot of people go, and they get this in the mail, that they're gonna take their tax returns, and they think that it's the federal tax return.
Can I respond on that?
I forgot this one.
I just come from, really come on that board, board of directors. It's been very successful. As a matter of fact, we are getting people to pay, uh, here, and it's really gonna kick off this coming year, because that's really, really starting with their income tax.
Okay, and this is for court line?
Court files.
Any, any amount of money he goes to.
Alright.
Okay.
Would there be any more discussion? All in favor, vote by you and sign of A. Any opposed, may they have signed right motion carried now. Wait, right here. Alright, I have in front of me the, uh, Mississippi Department Archive. I have six letters, but three of them, two copies for each one. I don't know exactly why, but this is, um, Beulah Baptist Church. Uh, the Shaw House.
Who's that?
Shaw, the Shaw House.
Where is that?
I have no idea. Uh, Enroll Hill Missionary Baptist Church. Um, they are putting on, uh, they will be put on the National, uh, Rare Street to review, uh, for the board. So, Brandon, I guess they came back. I know we had sent them, and then so they need a motion to be spread across our ministry, but...
I presume, yes, sir.
I gave them, they're just, they're just, we...
I think that's all it is, is just the board has all, so.
Yeah, we had, uh, it's been properly moved by Supervisor Hudson, properly seconded by Supervisor, uh, Gray. Would there be any discussion? If there be no discussion, all in favor, vote by you and sign of A. Any opposed, may they have signed right motion carried now. And I still have this in my folder, but Brad's not here. Uh, that was on AJFC, wanted to have, um, free life training, uh, life training skills. Another day was November sixteenth, December twenty-first, January twenty-fifth of, twenty-fourth, February, twenty-second, March the eighteenth, and April the eighteenth of the next year. But, uh, when Brad is here, to save him under shelter, that we need to give Brad to go through and see what they say, and that book, and so we can move forward with this. But, uh, I think that that, let me make sure I don't have anything else. No, I guess before, of them, for the first day, I guess Brad did, if nothing was going on, and it wasn't renting or whatever. But I would like to at least give them something around.
Since not yet you rent the other building, you think you gonna give her a list of that too?
She have, her, her and Brad worked it out. Yes, yes, sir, Mr. Gray. Corvette, um, uh, uh, would be in on it, 'cause nothing that, uh, Brad does, I, I think I've been here, he's working on some other stuff, that they always stay in communication to make sure it's not renting on that thing. Alright? Well, we got, uh, Brad, Brad has said that he gave him last time, so obviously Brad, and by the next week, uh, we'll, we'll, though. Alright, well. Ready?
President Gang, I'm sorry. I got my little thing I forgot on the... I spoke to Mr. Gray the other day. We had two adjudicated lots over there on Murble Drive on Second Street. And all we have is a big tractor and a small six-foot bush hog that we try to get up in them yards and things like that. Uh, one of them wasn't able to get in the backyard. Uh, I, I don't know. Sheriff, this might be something you might could help us out with. I have no idea. I know y'all got two zero turns and things that y'all cut. We don't have one in the county.
I missed that first part, what you saying?
Well, it's adjudicated lots, these lots that we go cut, the old grow lots and things. We try to get a tractor up, and it's like, one was on Murble, one was on Second Street. It, it, it's just so much we can do, we get up there to try to cut it, to do. And, you know, before I had to present something to the board, it's really not worth us buying zero turn for, trying to get in there to do these lots, 'cause, I mean, we do, what, four, five, six a year, maybe max. And I, I would just, is it any help with y'all's board? If not, that's fine. It's just something, I'm not trying to put anything on y'all, but I'm just asking. Before I come to the board, and I did do it this year.
Well, me and Ralph talked about it after the neighbors blew up my office. And I told them, y'all had tractor over there. I don't know y'all availability to assist on that, but I'm the one told him to check with you.
And we'll definitely talk after this meeting for sure, because I don't wanna say something, 'cause you know them guys be, we had them guys pretty stretched out every day. And, um, and I'd like to see whatever you talking about, bring it on before I answer that question. I like talking about people.
That's fine. I just, you know, just something we had discussed. It's just hard for us to do with a big tractor.
I got you.
You know, and I also recommend, I mean, I know our, um, management department, state business, cutting grass. You only do three to four houses, maybe five houses in a year. So, between the sheriff department and the management department, we already have. So, you know, um, maybe we can work something out that we, we possibly can, uh, we possibly can get something done without having to invest in a, a zero turn.
Well, fortunately, we can bring the end of the growing season, so we could wait another couple of weeks. I mean, it's not, we're not gonna be cutting grass anywhere.
Yeah.
Alright.
I will, too, hey. Thank you. Thank you, President Gang. I'm sorry. That's all I got.
Okay, alright.
President, before we move on, uh, Mr. Slow, uh, sixteen Booker Road, it probably got over there with, uh, more than one neighbor's complaining now, so I, 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 did you send him a letter?
He did. He contacted me, saying he would clean it up.
House on the right?
Yeah.
Did, did you give him a timing, 'cause he might be next year trying to clean it up. You got a lot to clean up over there.
Yeah, I did. It was pretty harsh on the time, too, 'cause most of it's just junk. Needs to get off the back of those trucks and get it off, and cut his grass in the backyard. Sixteen?
Sixteen?
Booker?
Yes, sir.
I will go ahead and use the ministering property notice, get that going on it, but if he has town, he's gotta do. That, that'll give you deadlines before the hearing day. No reason not to, but I'm just making it. I know we have a bunch of on film coming up.
Alright, well...
We ran out of ministering property signs.
So, based on my report, I, I don't have really a report, but what I would recommend to the board, uh, just say for the good of the owner, uh, you know, we've been in a tight spot, we've been doing that, I think we need to make sure that we have an open line of communication, uh, and I'm not talking about one department, I'm not talking about no one individual here, I'm talking about everybody on this board, including me, and everybody sitting at this table, uh, and we see it happening since I've been here, uh, just like, for instance, today, uh, it wasn't nothing a big thing though, 'cause the guy was new, uh, checks and balance Supervisor Gray, uh, asked a couple times, he want checks and balances, and just communicating, and I think that's a thing that we all need to kind of pay more attention to, especially when we looking at money, so from each department, and even with me, I'll do my best to communicate and keep an open and balanced, and if you, I'd most like the sheriff said, uh, to the public, if you see some, say some, don't wait till we get up in the meeting, and come here and have a, 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 a different, a, a other opinion, and get to a, an argument with the attorney, or with me, or with the other, when we simply can kind of see something going on, we can, uh, meet with individuals in, in the department, and make sure we let them know what we need, and let them know what to present, and that'll give us a better way to, uh, you know, check our checks and balances, how money being spent, when it's going out, and when it coming in, and that concludes my report, so now I need a motion for close termination. It been properly moved by Supervisor Hutchins, proper seconded by Supervisor Gray, would there be any discussion? If there be more discussion, all in favor of vote by using sign of aye. In a poll, may they have a sign right most carry now.